I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The first order of business is remote attendance, and I don't believe we have any need for remote attendance.
No.
The second item on the agenda is to accept the agenda. Is there a motion?
A move to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay. Great, that's been moved and seconded, and we need a roll call vote. We'll start with Cedric.
Aye.
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 All right. That passes. All right, moving on to public comment, and I do believe we have public comments.
You can just call them up and let them know that it's like a three-minute.
Right.
And then he brought some documents to share, which we'll email out after, so.
Great, okay. Jeff Cunningham, if you'd like to come forward. You have three minutes to present to the board.
Okay.
And we don't respond at this time, but if there's any response needed, we'll follow up. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Jeff Cunningham. I'm very grateful to live in Urbana, such a first-class park district. I thank you all for your service to the community, which district could not do this much to do. Myself and other users of the indoor pool have been very concerned with conditions there. And I'll just name a few. Lifeguards, talking to friends for minutes at a time while I'm doing it in their chair. The person monitoring the water slide, not into a child to allow them go down the slide without even checking that the pool was clear below, then going back to the book in her hand. There's a video. Did I supply of that? No enforcement of the no street shoes rule. I've taken to informing users with shoes on in the locker room because my complaints to the manager on duty were acknowledged but not enforced. I've also taken upon myself to squeegee the floor so I didn't have to walk in the filth. There are photos of that that I shared with you. Another thing is pool closings without notice. They were not, these were not swimming days or closings posted on the website. I hammered the signs, simply read "pool closed," another time tracking. It's gotten to the point where I call before leaving to go swim, but even this has had its problems since the phone system has often been broken. There are other issues that indicate poor management that I will highlight at the end. And the larger issue is it appears next fall the family swim time on Huita evenings will be taken away from the community. I say appears because there has been no public notice of this drastic change, excepting what I consider a bureaucratic response, quote, "to provide the highest level of programming" at the UIAC, which appeared in the News Gazette's mailbox section. And I believe that was the school district's spokesperson. I'm glad that my son is now an adult and we didn't miss all those evenings of swimming and bonding there. And I felt sad for the father that I talked to, who asked, "I work during the day and while we swim." I wonder what the late Mary Alice English would think. Thank you for your time. Thanks, Cedric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And so there are materials that will be shared, emailed to us?
Yes, we can send those.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is appointments of the 2023-2026 UPDAC class.
Well, as you know, it's time to appoint our new UPDAC class. As you know, we do an extensive background, try to get the word out, canvassing, promoting, doing everything we can do. Certainly had a chance to talk about it at the SUNA meeting, and I think we picked up some people. But I did want to kind of promote, one of the bigger changes we've really seen in the last couple of years is really working with our coast partners, our outreach, and just our general community partners, people like the library, the city, school district, other organizations, really kind of create that opportunity to seek out who would want to serve on UPDAC, and how do we, you know, promote that, and what do they do? And so we've had more success within the partnership. And my reason of pointing that out is, I think staff feels that's probably where we're going to really see more diversity and more different kind of people serving, and folks that are really interested in making a difference. So that's a little bit different than more random, you know, doorknob-type things, or hoping a certain neighborhood responds. We are getting, you know, response from different neighborhoods. I think we had somebody from, in this group, from Victory. I think we have somebody, hopefully next month, that'll be on the roster from the SUNA neighborhood. So I think we're still doing that geographic, so I'm suggesting we're doing both. We're still trying to look for representation by area, always has been our challenge, but now I think by topic or by interest. So that gives us another way to get different types of people involved in UPDAC. So tonight, we have recommended two motions. You could certainly combine them, but we have the candidates that are agreeing to serve a three-year term, which are Hannah Sheets, Lauren Chambers, Lucia Maldonado, and Gretchen Madsen-Webb in that first group. We do have some others that are coming forward that'll be unlikely for next month, and that's sort of how we do them batch, and we're always out, really year-round, talking to people. There gets that intense spring/may period where we really have to start, okay, you're committed, and get your applications in, but we continue that for a couple of months. So we'll have, hopefully, a few more coming next month. We anticipate perhaps two more, so our numbers are good. And then while I'm providing information, we also wanted to recommend that we approve the reappointment of Lori Choquette to serve a three-year term as part of the 2326 class. She had agreed to serve on UPDAC to fill a position, somebody that had stepped off, and so she completed that term and is willing to do her own term, which I just want to say, thank you, Lori. That's really an amazing thing. We're super grateful to anybody that would fill a term, because that's a huge relief and super important, and that she would want to continue. And lastly, I would just say, I think that speaks to the high-quality people and the topics, and really the efforts that we're seeing come out of UPDAC. I think we have a very mature group, I think they're very autonomous, they really interact well with staff. I mean, we have a lot of really substantial discussions, and yet they still bring challenging topics to us and concerns. So that's really, I guess, you know, the ideal type of people that would be serving on UPDAC. So again, we have this first group for your approvals tonight, and we plan to come back next month with at least two additional. That's assuming they get their applications in and all of that.
I move to approve the following candidates to serve three-year terms as part of the 2023-26 class for the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee. Hannah Sheets, Lauren Chambers, Lucia Maldonado, and Gretchen Madsen-Webb, and the reappointment of Lori Choquette to serve a three-year term as part of the 2023-26 class for the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, if not, we need a roll call vote. We'll start this side.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. The next item of business is the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee report. I, we don't have a representative from UPDAC here tonight, but I don't know if Cedric, we were at the meeting, or you want to provide any additional comment?
Um, no.
Okay, that's fine. All right. We have a copy of their minutes in our board packet. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. As a reminder, the consent agenda are action and information items that appear as routine and will be enacted in one motion. And if anyone would like to remove anything from the consent agenda, now is the time. All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the action items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. We need a roll call vote. We'll start with Cedric.
Aye.
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 All right. That passes. Moving on to reports, we'll start with the financial report.
Yep, we'll start with our fund balance reports. We have a set of reports in our packet. Page one is sum one. These are the revenues and receipts and expenditures listed in three columns, the prior 12 months, the budget for the current period, and preliminary unaudited for the one month ending May 31st, 23. Page one, total revenues, $1,224,399. And just a quick note, we have received our first distribution of taxes, yay. Unfortunately, it was distributed in two pieces on May 31st and June 1st, so the whole first distribution was $2,146,000, but you're only seeing $900,000 in this report. We also did get our first installment of CPPRT as well, $94,000. So money's coming in, good position to be in. Expenditures for all funds minus the capital account is $654,935. That leaves us with an excess of revenues over expenditures of $569,464. On page two, labeled sum two, this is the capital fund account standalone. Revenues for one month were $209,622. Again, $200,000 of that, we received the final grant funding of $200,000 for the Blair Oslad, received on May 1st. And then the expenditures were $4,689. Again, this puts us in excess of revenues over expenditures, $204,923. Page three, sum three. This is all funds district-wide, and please note the ending fund balance for the district as a whole is $15,290,119. The remaining summary reports are individual fund reports for our three working funds, general, recreation, and museum, and the last page of reports is the UIAC indoor pool Second set of reports, these are treasures report, amount of cash the district has on one day, May 31st, 2023. All 25 funds listed down the left-hand column, and where the cash is invested is displayed across the top. Bottom right-hand corner, total investments on this date, $17,826,982.17. Page two, top half. Of that $17,827,000, we have $11,000, or excuse me, $11,946,000 out in investments at varying rates, currently between 2.35% and 5.35%. The bottom section, this is our.
Hang on just a second, Laura. That's a smaller ratio of money invested to money that we have on hand than I think usual is, are you holding money for expenses related to health and wellness, or?
We are, yeah. Not holding, I don't know how to use that word, but yes, we've moved it out of the investments into operating essentially for capital, because, you know, we're, we don't, we can't guarantee when funding's going to be coming across from Park and from DCEO, et cetera, and so we'll be having to use anything liquid upfront, so.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely, thank you. On page two, the bottom, is our inter-fund loans. Again, there was a $500,000 move from the rec fund to the indoor pool. Remember, we had that same situation in the previous month, and that, again, is just timing. This is standard at the end of the year, waiting for the reimbursement from the school district, so that'll get repaid back. We get that usually in mid-July, so that should be all straightened up next month. And then page three, this is the last section of the treasures report, listing all the distributions for the month of May, and the vendor payments match the accounts payable from the consent agenda. And the total distributions of funds, which includes payroll and vendors, is $768,454. And I present to you the treasures report for audit.
Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, do a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 All right, passes. Capital budget report, last set of reports, and Andy was very busy this last month, spending
money. And remember, this one, we're still processing the end of year, so there are some expenditures that are still posting back to April 30th and then May, so you've got two columns that are kind of highlighted right now, or asterisk accordingly. So, starting with the first page, 2019A, capital budget, we have recognized revenue, $34,587. This is all the health and wellness donation money was deferred until we're ready to spend it. Well, now we're starting to spend it. So as we spend it, we've got to bring it out of deferred, recognize it, and you'll see further down on this page where we've, that same amount comes up. Under expenditures for Crystal Lake, there was $11,700 expense to Kirby &amp; Turner for the Crystal Lake Park pillars repaired and washed, cleaned. There is an expense to Fairgram for $3,809. This was for design work, number 32 and 33. $2,647,000, or excuse me, $2,642 expense to Farnsworth. This was part of the Weaver Fields planning, three and four. That amount is a piece of a bigger bill, spread across two budgets, so you'll see it again a little further down. And the last item on this page is the $34,587. This was expense to Core. This is for pre-construction of health and wellness. 2023 budget expenditures, $424 expense for plaques under tributes and donations, an additional $647 expensed in May for a plaque and a tree. Construction crew projects, $892 expense for miscellaneous supplies. And at the very bottom, cottage painting, $1,000 expense to Romine Painting. And again, I think this was a deposit, Andy, I'm not sure. I don't know what the total bill.
Was it like a thousand?
It's a thousand dollars, yeah.
That was the portion of work that was completed last fiscal year, which was just the power washing.
Power washing, okay.
It was like two days before the fiscal year ended, so we had to split it.
Perfect. Okay, 2022 budget. Under expenditures, tributes and donations, $145 expense, this was for a tree. Further down, $284 under hardscapes and fencing, this was for some boulders. Meadowbrook Park from donations, there was a bench donated, $500 for Prairie Play. And the last line item in that group, $15,227 expense to Fair, this was for engineering in relation to the Broadway ITEP project. Again, under revenues, there was a end-of, one of our end-of-year budgeted transfers for $247,150. This was for the balance that we needed to move over from the museum fund over to the capital fund for the outdoor learning pavilion project. Under expenditures, we had recognized $6,850. This is the last pieces of the new phone system equipment purchases. This is another item that's kind of spread over a couple budgets, so you're going to hear it again. And UIAC expenditures, $5,438. This was for one of the heaters. There are several heaters being replaced, there is this for one of them. Outdoor learning pavilion from fund transfer, $1,310 were expensed for stones in that project, and $577 expensed for some element of engineering in relation to the outdoor learning pavilion. A little further down, we received our first lake treatment, $3,780. And moving on down, we've got $176 expense to Ratio for design in relation to the Meadowbrook Park entry garden. $6,300 to, expense to Engineering Resources Association, this was for a bridge evaluation. And $2,368 expensed, this was for trim work being repaired in relation to the cottage project, spread across two budgets. This is our $200,000 of final Oslad/Blair income, revenue. And then under expenditures for technology, the second part of some phone equipment, $2,153. 2019, end-of-year FY23 budgeted transfer recognition of revenue, $9,950. You'll see down below where this was for the, at the nature center, some exit doors were replaced. And under tributes and donations, $208 towards a plaque. The last page, 2018, $5,360 expense to Farnsworth. This is the second part of the Weaver Fields planning invoice, and $175 expensed for the balance on the cottage trim repair. This budget is fully expended.
Yay.
Yay, so.
Good work.
Put our glasses away trying to read.
I know, it was super tiny.
Lord, there's a dollar in the bottom right corner.
Yeah. Oh, you're just mean. It's fully expended. But I will turn it over to Derek and Andy for capital projects update.
There are slides.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to move.
Just a few. First off, just a quick update on Health and Wellness Center as far as construction timing. I think most of you had seen this graphic that was created for us from Core. Laura, I don't believe you may have at this point, but this is kind of their proposed layout for construction site logistics, so this is the full construction fence that they would have, their trailer, dumpsters, portable toilets, construction traffic. And really, I was just bringing this up to kind of update on the overall schedule. Right now, it's still looking like the actual groundbreaking with Core Construction is scheduled for the last week of June. They may have some activity out there, setting up the fencing and dumpsters and stuff the week before, but most of that activity should be starting in about two weeks. In the meantime, we're going to be working, hopefully, to bring to the board some contracts for purchases of items associated with a lot of our soft costs. So may, it may even be next month at the board meeting, we'll have some recommendations to purchase our gym equipment. And that's going to be the basketball standards, the gym padding, the curtains that drop down from the ceiling. We're all waiting for the pre-engineered metal building shop drawings to be finalized so we can have Porter Athletic confirm that their attachments to the structure are still good. And then once we have that confirmation, we'll bring that to the board through a Sourcewell contract. And then we'll also look to have the scoreboards in front of you all at that time, too, to review and approve. And the plan is for the Park District then to purchase that material, and then the installation will be completed through Core's contract with their construction overall. So, a lot of things upcoming.
I was just going to say, for those who may not know, Sourcewell is like a company that kind of does all the pre-bidding for you. So companies submit their pricing to Sourcewell, and then it's there for you to take the lowest bid from a company that's already did the bidding, so to speak.
It's like cooperative government purchasing, where there's a single house that does the bidding for a lot of different equipment, vehicles, playgrounds. And so on occasion, we'll try to take advantage of those bids that have already been put under contract and out in the public, and be able to move on some of those purchases. I did have a quick update on Prairie Play. I think it was last meeting, we, the board had authorized the contract with Upland Design for the design services for our Oslad project. They're going to have survey work out at the site next week or the week after, and once the survey work is complete, we're going to have our site kickoff meeting, which is looking to be the second week of July. So I should have some more updates here in the next couple of months. This is the nature center and outdoor pool parking lot. So as our project wrapped up with the UPDAC learning pavilion, we had some remaining contingency dollars, local funds, not through the grant, that we wanted to take the opportunity to continue to improve the site. Some of the things that we were looking at, once that new parking lot was constructed, was how we could better do pavement markings to help guide the new traffic flow in and out of that parking lot. Once we were looking at, you know, options to do that, we were looking at the rest of the parking lot and thought, wow, this whole parking lot could actually use some seal coat and restriping. So this is an image from in front of the nature center and in front of the outdoor pool, and it got done the week before the outdoor pool opened, and it turned out really nice.
That's great.
And with our Crystal Lake Road project, the last remaining area is the Lower West Lake House parking lot. You can see the retaining wall, I think we updated on last month or the month before. The contractor now that we've accepted this wall has begun their work on the paving, so this is the tack coat, which is like a binder layer before the asphalt goes in. Here you can see that new turnaround. And then the end of last week, I think they finished the actual asphalt portion, and then, I believe it was yesterday, the striping all down was also finished. Here you get a good look at that turnaround that's going to make it a lot easier for vehicles to drop off, either catering or Park District vehicles dropping off supplies for events. And this is actually open as of today, so the fencing came down, people are parking here. I think it's going to be utilized this weekend. The Juneteenth event, MTD's going to park a bus in there as well. And so the only thing that's really remaining left on the project is a railing that will go along the top and then down of our retaining wall. And that railing should be, should look like that railing that we have on the ITEP Park Street path, so it should have a similar look. And then this is a dumpster enclosure, and there's fencing that's going to go around here to help block a lot of those bollards. And then on the corner way over here, there's going to be a railing as well. It's the same contractor that's doing all three of those things, and so they've just kind of been waiting for everything else to wrap up before they come on site.
Andy, what happens in that top-left corner off of the wall? Is that all going to be landscaped then to the, you know, the stairs are right there up to the parking lot?
Yeah, we talked about doing like a no-mo mix in there.
A no-mo mix.
And mulch, basically.
Gotcha.
I was going to say, Andy, the wall looks really good. It looks like real stone.
Amazing. It turned out really well, so.
It's really sharp.
And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, this is statistics, a couple graphs, or one graph and some information for the SUTU wall. So last week, the, I believe it's our national sales rep for this company, Yelp, which I believe they're also changing their name, was in our area and reached out to meet with us out at the site. And turns out, the city of Champaign, the Champaign Park District, were also looking at a meeting with the salesperson, and they have some interest in purchasing their own SUTU wall on a cooperative project in Champaign. And so we all went out to the wall and met, and gave a little demonstration, brought a soccer ball and a tennis ball. They absolutely loved the wall, they were a big fan of it. We talked about its use, and it kind of triggered me that I don't think I've ever brought statistics after we've installed it to the board at all. So this kind of gives us a little bit of information on how it's being used and how much. So this is a statistics, just for this calendar year, what we're looking at, is a total playtime of almost seven days, an average playtime per day of, you know, an hour and 45 minutes. The most popular game is called FOX. And that's where a light-up square moves around the wall and you have to basically follow it and catch it and hit the target. Most popular day was over four hours of use. My theory is May twenty-sixth on a Friday might have been a field day for the schools at the end of the year. And that's why we have an outlier there. And then this graph here shows, I think I did the last month, every day. And the gray portion is where we actually have the wall programmed to be off. So it's only on from seven AM to nine PM. And you can see the different, the darker the blue is, the more time that it runs at a single interval or a single player using it. So you can see we're getting a lot of use afternoon into the evenings, not so much in the mornings and midday, which is not a big surprise based on what you would anticipate the users. There also, the mornings are pretty booked on that court with pickleball players as well. So there may not be a lot of intermingling of SUTU wall and pickleball players. So I'll try to remember maybe next year or two or after this, you know, warm season, you know, in later fall or whatever, I can try to remember to bring some stats back, just how the whole summer played out with it. But just having that meeting just kind of triggered my memory that it might be kind of interesting to see how playground equipment gets used where we don't really have an ability to see this kind of data on anything else.
That's cool.
That's cool.
That's it, other than if there's any questions.
Thank you. We can move on to executive director's report.
Great, we have a few things. And as we always do, when the pool's open, we'll come back and have Corky update us on pool facts and figures. But starting out, just wanted to recognize all the staff, all the full-time seasonal staff. Everyone's really kicking it, everything's open, all the camps, parks, landscape looks good, every, all the facilities are up and running and takes a great effort to do that. So we're very, very pleased with everyone so far. We had an excellent You Belong Here report and just wanted to mention, I think it was called out in there. But Derek and I had a really good meeting with Chris Evans, who's on city council. Do you remember, Chris, through the ARPA process, was very interested in, you know, promoting, you know, women and minority-based contractors. He was involved and attended the open house we had at Phillips over a year ago. So he really talked about, you know, ways we can work together to try to promote that in Urbana. And I think we're really interested in that and had some ideas. In fact, I think one of the, kind of the things we said, what, what can we do to help foster, keep that discussion going and find out new contractors and help promote them? You know, we have a couple of things, at Jetty Roads Day, there'll be some women and minority contractors or business owners that have things they're wanting to promote will be there. We talked about hosting another open house. We thought that was a great way to profile projects that are coming up so that we're having a dialogue, meeting people, getting to know, basically develop relationships. Oh, I know them, or we've worked with them, or I know that, you know, business owner. So we thought that would be something we can do and, you know, try to level that playing field and making sure that, you know, there's good work out there and that everyone that is interested has, you know, fair, fair access to that work. So we'll continue with that. Just wanted to mention, I think I've sent on or put it in the board correspondence, the University of Illinois is hosting the event June twenty-first. There'll be a day-long or afternoon-long sessions for the compact, Corky and I will be involved with that. And then there's a community picnic at Hessel Park, starting at five thirty to seven. So there's free food and activity, I think Chancellor Jones will be there. And so if you're free, come on out, have a good time, I'm sure we'll likely be there as well. You know, we're still hoping to find out any news of UPD serving as a community hub and any, any potential resources for health and wellness that might come to help support that, so we stay tuned. Health and wellness, just reminding folks, June twenty-sixth is at least the planned date to start construction, although we've been working and folks are already on, on the job, so to speak, getting things underway. I didn't know if Derek or Andy had any other updates on health and wellness while we're on that topic? Anything substantial or, I couldn't think of any, there's lots of things to share and talk about, but I didn't know if we had any.
Yeah, so we're, we're applying for reimbursement for, from the county for ARPA funds. The full half million dollars will be covered through our initial payment for the pre-engineered metal, metal building.
Wonderful.
And so we had correspondence back from them today to move forward with that. We've got our county, our city of Urbana ARPA funds approved today. And so we're expecting disbursement of the full two million dollars here shortly. And Andy and I and Shane Newell met with a solar vendor, talked about solar not only for that facility, but elsewhere in the district. And they have a couple of different models we can look at, both power purchase agreements and outright procurement. They've shown different kind of funding scenarios they want to bring back to the, the board finance study group. Matt, do you think of anything?
No, we work with MCS, this kind of goes into our soft cost, FFE items on kind of security camera proposal for all of the low voltage IT kind of stuff as well. So we're kind of working through a proposal on that now that may come to the board in the next month or two.
Got all the equipment? Business equipment laid out on what we need in the rooms?
You're about to pull over your microphone, sorry.
All the way down?
Yep.
I think your foot choked on the floor.
Thank you.
There, there is one thing I'm not sure that we've discussed, and that is the change in the rooms.
Oh.
Yep.
It might have been mentioned at study session that we.
Okay.
Missed, but anyhow, there's two rooms that are next to each other on the top floor that were designed for equipment and kind of weight room area. And then there was gonna be more of a, I'd say, personal training type space. When we started laying out the equipment, there really wasn't gonna be a lot of equipment when you're putting treadmills and weight, free weights and that kind of stuff in one space. So we've actually are working on making an adjustment to the rooms. In between the rooms, part of it is a plumbing chase that goes, or a chase or plumbing, electrical, all that kind of stuff. And then on the backside of it, there's about ten feet that was gonna be a storage, small storage space. So as we started laying out the equipment, we decided to open that space. So it's kind of a walkthrough to the other room. And that way we have more of the exercise cardio equipment in one room and the weights in the other space. So it has a better flow, it allows us to get more in there, which is, you know, from a membership perspective, that's what's gonna help us sell our, sell our membership, so.
At one point, there's also maybe a conversation about renting versus buying equipment. Are we outright purchasing equipment?
Yes, we, we had, we did have that, a lot of that discussion in the very beginning. But I think we've found that it's probably best for this first time to purchase. So we can find out the wear and tear for one. And then there's always the option that you can sell it.
Back.
Back and you can, you can rent it the next time if that's what you want to do. But I, I think we felt that based on the size of the space, it might be best just to purchase it first and then make other decisions as we see the, the wear pattern.
Great, thank you.
I was gonna add too, we had, I think I mentioned it last month, but we completed our meetings with the superintendents and director with the city, county, schools and MTD. We had really good substantial meetings, obviously updated them on the project, what are some immediate things. But that led to other discussions. So I think that richness of, you know, what else can we do? I think there's a lot of excitement in seeing change in that neighborhood, everything from bus service that might be willing to switch some routes to make things a little more efficient, to just connections and using the site. So we're excited about that. In fact, we agreed we would go back and reconnect with all the groups, provide updates with, and might have some more business to conduct, to get that done. So got those tasks done and are on the way. Moving ahead, we hosted a meeting between UPD leadership and Champaign Park District leadership to have our staff meet the new director, Sarah Sanquist. We had a brown bag here in the building and they brought some of their key staff. And I'd encouraged us all to think about cooperative efforts. So we kind of reviewed what are we currently doing? And we have a lot of cooperative efforts that we already do. But then we discussed new cooperative efforts, things we could do together that would benefit the public. So as we think about our Local Government Efficiency Act, those are the kind of things that I think people really care about. What kind of services am I getting right in my own town and are our local agencies working together on our behalf? So I just wanted to point that out, that's something we're doing and, you know, trying to promote that. So I expect good things to come of that, we agreed we would meet again. Wanted to report that I participated in the twenty twenty-three SUNA meeting, that's the South Urbana Neighborhood Association. Had a really good crowd, smaller than typical, probably rebuilding from COVID times where we didn't meet. But we still had a very good presentation and some good topics. In fact, I'm meeting with the two neighborhood organizers. I think we could, trying to suggest some opportunities for them that we would be willing to help. But we have all these neighborhood folks sitting in this room and it's more one-on-one reporting about each agency and maybe some Q and A and, you know, if somebody's unhappy about something, they can share it. I think some tabling and brainstorming and maybe some team working. With that many great people in a room, I can't believe you couldn't come out with three new initiatives that you could actually get done. So I'm gonna promote more of tabling exercises where we might have questions at hand or goals or problem solving. And I think we could elevate everyone's time and energy in that way. So we'll see how that goes. Let's see, I think we have a couple things, we'll go to pool. Victory Park, I think Andy's got popped up. We had a packet sent over from the city, if you can just take a look at that. A number of years ago, if you remember, at our request, we had the city repave or give a, I think it was a seal coat over Grossback Drive, which is a kind of a special access, there used to be a number of houses right there on that north end of Victory Park by Main Street. As you know, we bought the homes, took them down and returned that area to turf. We also met with Scott Tess a number of months ago and he let us know the city is trying to work through their five hundred-plus parcels of land that they're trying to return to owners or put in other hands or kind of transition. When Bill Gray was city engineer, I think he suggested, you know, to Derek and I that, you know, it'd be nice if you all took this over. So we did get the paperwork and it's being conveyed to us. If we didn't want it, I think we would have to put up, you know, some effort. But I did want to share it with you all and just concur and get at least a straw poll that, you know, we agree on that. So the two areas in yellow, which are right of ways, will return to the park district. And then I think in talking with Derek, he'd suggested, you know, might be a good opportunity for the planning staff to take a look at, you know, the park again to see what opportunities, what's needed, do we need all of that? Are there, you know, any new opportunities with the properties we have on that east, sorry, west side? So we'll probably take a look at that as well, but I'd recommend that we agree to the city that we would take that. Again, I think it's being conveyed to us because obviously we have the park and it's within the park. If we didn't want it, we would have to probably convince them they needed to keep it and maintain it. Again, I think we assumed it would come to us and we were willing to do that a number of years ago. But I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. I'll file a paper and send it back to the city. And then I'm sure we'll get final notice, you know, that we own that section.
Tim, when we demolished the, the last house on Grossback, we reached out to the city thinking that they may want to transfer the property at that time. And I think they were thinking a little bit differently at that time and they said, said, well, maybe we could sell it to you. And we thought, well, let's, let's hold on that.
Yeah. And as you know, there, I think there's a parcel probably on the school district property near the new health and wellness. I think there were a couple of sites, we talked about park district adjacency, a few we did not accept. So anyway, that's what we know about that. And then lastly, I think Corky, did you want to give us any facts and figures on the outdoor pool?
Yep.
Pool season.
Well, last year we had a pretty good year. Last year when I came, we were going over like three or four years due to COVID. This year I just brought last year and this year. So in, in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, last summer, pass entries, we had a thousand twenty-nine by this time. So that's people going in with a pass. And we had five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven daily admissions, so people coming in and paying at the window. For a total of six thousand three hundred and ninety-six visits this year so far, from Memorial Day till now. And the numbers I just gave you are from Memorial Day till now as well. Twenty twenty-three, we had a thousand thirty-eight pass entries, so like only nine more pass entries. However, on daily admissions, we have eight thousand four hundred and ninety-two entries. So a difference, six thousand three ninety-six in twenty-two and nine thousand five hundred and thirty so far this year. Again, it started out really, really warm and really nice. Last few days have not been quite that, that great. But total revenue in twenty-two up to this point was ninety-three thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. And thus far this year, we are at a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. So a really good start, hopefully warms back up a little bit and we continue to, to roll. Although I would take some rain as well, we need some rain. Overnight.
Overnight.
Can I answer any other questions if you have?
All right, if no questions, we can move on to the president's report. He's not here, but in his absence, I can walk through the reminders that upcoming meetings, there's a June twenty-seventh Up Deck meeting. July fourth, there's no study session. And the July eleventh regular board meeting will focus on a public hearing on combined budget and appropriation ordinance, adopt and approve our budget, update lease agreement for twenty-eight oh eight South Ray Street. That's the Meadowbrook Park House. And semi, oh, fun stuff, the semi-annual review of past executive session minutes. So there will be an executive session, do we know, is that post or pre?
We tend to do those before.
Before, okay.
Yeah.
Six thirty.
Last one was unique situation.
Okay, and then the action to release past executive minutes, so we should plan for an executive session. Okay, great.
I may need, I may need a ride that week, on July eleven.
And then there are lots of dates for your calendar, lots of great activities coming up, neighborhood nights, Jetty Roads Day, June twenty-fourth. And, yeah, it's for your calendars.
Juneteenth is Sunday.
Yeah, Juneteenth is Sunday.
Exciting.
Yeah.
And Jetty Rose.
Yes.
Twenty-fourth, yes.
Twenty-fourth.
Yep.
All right, so moving along to the liaison reports, do we have any updates from the finance study group?
Pretty much, we discussed the things that have come before the board as, as usual, so, yeah.
All right. The UPD Policy Study Group, we have.
You have not met.
We have not met, yep. Their Bana Parks Foundation?
Well, we kind of met yesterday. Technically, we did not meet because we lacked one to have a quorum, so we, but we heard everybody's report, so it was fine. I think as one, one person, Mary Ann Downey pointed out, that the real headline was the amount of money that was raised for scholarships at the, at the, what's the word I'm looking?
Barn Bash.
Thank you, at the Barn Bash. Before the Barn Bash, twelve thousand dollars, or twelve thousand dollars had been raised.
Hundred.
And the hope was to match that.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Ah. That's not the way.
Just at that one event?
Yes.
So in that perspective?
At any rate.
Three hours?
Twelve hundred.
So I think it's a total of twenty-six hundred.
Six hundred, but that's a lot more than usual.
Right.
So, sorry, I have trouble with thousands and millions. Anyway, yes, twenty-six hundred. So it was nice that the people who were there, I think it went off better than the fifty-fifty did in terms of raising money. So we have twenty-six hundred dollars more. I wish we had twenty-six thousand.
I mean, too, and I wish it was twelve.
Twenty-six hundred dollars more for.
We'll get there though.
Yes, for, for that. So that was the main, the main thing, everything else was fairly routine. And less garbled.
Up Deck Planning Study Group?
I would expect that we will be meeting probably here in the next couple of months to figure out the rest of the.
Moving along to old business, and we don't have any old business, we didn't have anything moved, so we can move on to new business. And the first item is receiving the FY 2023-24 Combined Budget and Appropriation Ordinance 2023.
Or did you have anything to say, or did you want me to?
I don't believe I have anything more to add to this.
I think it's fairly straightforward.
Yep.
You're all receiving it and will act on it in July, so no action required tonight. Just want to thank everyone involved in the budget process. It's very time-consuming, takes up lots of everyone's energy, and it kind of runs its own engine at the same time. So glad to see that come together.
All right, the next item is the action on Resolution 2023-08 to accept the FY 2023-2024 CUSR budget.
Last month, you remember, Jamil Jones came from Champaign Park District, provided an overview of the budget. And so tonight we have this resolution as a sort of acknowledgement of that in Exhibit A, which is the, the budget. Just a reminder, Champaign Park District is the administrative agency, so they actually hire the staff, and the staff are under their policies like any other Champaign Park District employee, as the board is made up of representatives of both staffs. So Corky and I represent Urbana. So they prepare the budget, the physical budget itself. We certainly consult and work with the staff throughout the year to, you know, pull items together, but technically they're responsible for putting it together and getting it in their time format. Some of the years, we get challenged, they get busy too, and getting our meetings synced, where we have the actual budget, has been often challenging. We pulled it together this year and we have it, but that's sort of our process. And then we do some sort of recognition or acknowledgement that we've received and we accept the budget. So we're not necessarily approving it, or the numbers are responsible for carrying it out, but we have seen it, had a chance as a partner to review it and accept it. And there is action required on, on item, that, item B.
Do we have a motion?
So I'm, I'm.
Go ahead.
I move to accept the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget for the Champaign-Urbana Special Recreation Program as described in the attached.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion at the point? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 All right.
I think for future passes.
All right, and I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. Well, almost, to comments from commissioners.
Seems like we're at the end of the agenda.
Yes. Any comments from commissioners?
I just want to say briefly that I was at Neighborhood Nights last week at Lake House, saw several of you there, but it was just a really great venue for Neighborhood Nights. It was really fun to see people in all the nooks around, you know, around the lake house, but, you know, in different spots using it. So I hope we keep that in the rotation. So it was a really great event.
It did work out well.
Yeah.
I think it's refreshing to be back there in a concert format like that, so good thoughts, good coming.
Well, having, having the building there was, made it all move so much easier, too. So I think you'll see it in the same spot for years to come, especially since the pavilion's up.
Right.
Near the nature center now.
Well, hopefully we'll find a new place during the time we're renovating the lake house in that future phase, so look forward to that. But I think we did have that discussion, too, of, you know, as wonderful it is, we can see an opportunity to, you know, freshen up that space, too. You know, it's been that way since, what, 1984, 85? I came in, I think we moved here in 86 and it was built, and it had just opened, I think, so.
We do have plans that are in our, you know, long-term capital to redo some of that decking space as well. We heard recently from Keith that there's more rot. One of the major stringers is, is beginning to rot out, and so we're beginning to work with recreation on some planned closure, or at least notification, when we'll be doing that work in the fall.
Mm-hmm. Just a reminder, you know, salt goes down on the wood to make it not slippery and just being out in the exposure, so the wear and tear, you know, it's probably pretty high on that, on that surfacing. And I think the discussion at the lake house, I think we were noting, it's interesting today's design, where we focus on universal design, creating easy access from your arrival to your departure is not exactly what's evident at the lake house. But that was an era in the 80s where a lot of parks, you know, elevations and landforms were really the thing and showing how dynamic you could be with elevation. And I think it really did a good job of that. But again, we put lens of, gosh, people just want to get there and spread out, and, you know, we want room for the band and the caterers and everybody. We would probably do it different today. So as Derek mentioned, when we get that phase rolling up, we'll be back, look at what we can do to improve that.
Thanks. All right, if there are no other comments, we can be adjourned.
All right, thanks all. Appreciate everyone.